Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge Special Town Council meeting of Monday, June 28th, 2021, 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. Roll call, Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Dow is excused. Counselor Jovens, present. Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Stees is excused. And Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. So, for the purposes of this meeting, our recording secretary will be transcribing and doing the minutes based on the recording because she could not be here at 6 o'clock. And she's the only one we have scheduled for this now. The agenda I am this evening is to discuss credible evidence by the animal control officer regarding the violations of the nuisance dog order issued by the town council on January 28th, 2021, with the recommendation not to award the dog back to Mr. Zalinski. Just as a reminder, this matter is being held pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 140, Section 157. As everyone is aware, we conducted a lengthy dog hearing back on January 28th. I think it went somewhere in the order of four hours. We got in Mr. Zalinski's dog and incidents pursuant to that, Mr. Donald Zalinski of 33 Henry Street. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether or not there was a violation of the nuisance dog order and to take any action by the town council. Just a few rules on the hearing itself. All persons wishing to speak must be recognized by the chairman. All those wishing to speak must introduce themselves by the name and address or affiliation at the podium over there. We do not have an attorney here present for the town, and I do not believe you have an attorney present as well. So we'll hear the testimony first on the town of Southbridge officers, the animal control officer, and if there's any further information by the chief, then we'll have information from Mr. Zalinski and any other witnesses. And then at the conclusion of that presentation, we will then deliberate as to the next steps. My intent on this is we will not rehash the public hearing of January 28th. That was a lengthy hearing. We had a lot of evidence. This hearing is specific to the violations that are alleged to have occurred based on our order of January 28th. So I just want to make that clear because I'm not, do not want to, it's hot up here, and I want to have everybody have the opportunity to be heard, but we do not need to hear the order, the violations. So on January 28th, after that order, the notice was hand-delivered to Mr. Zalinski on January 28th, in which there was three, there was several items that we were ordered, and then it was a violation of that order. So we'll first hear, I guess, from Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add, or are we prepared to go forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, we did have the hearing back in January on this matter. At that time, you had ruled on the matter, and I had sent a letter, which was delivered in hand to Mr. Zalinski outlining the potential penalties under Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157A. I was alerted shortly after the Friday, June 11 event by ACO Spencer, who's here this evening. She informed me of the nature of the offense, and she went into detail and subsequently provided me with the information that you have this evening. I've also been contacted by Mr. Zalinski, who did express his desire to have this hearing this evening, and did talk to him and explain where his dog was being currently held. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that you take the time to hear from both parties as to what happened and determine your outcome, and then we can discuss, based upon your finding, what, if anything, would be the appropriate remedy under Chapter 140, 157A, if you do deem that Mr. Zalinski did, in fact, violate the terms of the order that we issued back in January.
Thank you. Okay, first, Chief Whitson and ACO Spencer. I don't know who wants to go first. And just for the public and for the councils, you should have all gotten the packet, which I had asked the town, on the town side here, that all councils received the minutes from that meeting, as well as other supporting documents from that hearing. And looking at the minutes, that was a five-hour-plus meeting, so. ACO Spencer.
Good evening, Caitlin Spencer, Southbridge Animal Control.
All right, give us a second, we're gonna have them turn it up. It might take a second for that to go up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Caitlin Spencer, Southbridge Animal Control. I'm here to present the violations that have occurred since the nuisance dog order has been issued from the town council back in January. There was a couple of instances that I have noted since this order was passed. I'll start with the first, sorry, the most recent violation, which occurred on Friday, June 11th. As I was patrolling the town of Southbridge, as I normally do during my normal work hours, I patrol the recreational areas of town of Southbridge, looking for public nuisance violations and dog litter violations. One of my areas that I patrol is the Henry Street Park and Field. And as I was coming down on Henry Street, I observed Mr. Zalinski in the gated playground area with his dog Vegas unmuzzled. At that time, Vegas was laying calmly on the ground without the restraint mechanism on his face. I pulled the truck over and addressed Mr. Zalinski of where was the muzzle for a Vegas. Mr. Zalinski became alarmed of my presence, and as we had the hearing about the dog's behavior, that same type of behavior was exhibited with the dog Vegas. The dog started barking, his hackles were up, moving in a forward motion. At that time, after the dog barked for a little bit at my presence, that's when Mr. Zalinski decided to put the muzzle back on his dog. When asked why he did not have a muzzle on his dog, he stated that the dog was vomiting and was choking, and he took this muzzle off to help relieve the stress of the dog. I also just want to make point, with the type of muzzle this dog has, it's an open-basket muzzle. This is used in veterinary practices for aggressive dogs, and it's supposed to be able, if things can pass through it and things can go in, so dogs can eat with this, they can drink with it. If they're vomiting, they can vomit without it obstructing or causing any aspiration to the dog. So, as the dog was acting in a protective manner, the dog was in the prohibited zone of the playground area, and I asked Mr. Zalinski to leave and go home with his dog. He proceeded to continue his walk throughout the town with his dog and did not go back to his apartment, which I found was a little odd with, if your dog is sick, why would you continue with walking the dog and not bring it home in that type of manner? I went back to the station, reported my findings to the shift supervisor, the actions were taken, we decided to take action and seize the dog since it was a violation of the town order and the fact that the muzzle was there for safety reasons and it was not in place. When we made contact with Mr. Zalinski, who is already on Mechanic Street, sitting right next to the AO with the dog Vegas, muzzled at that time, when we approached Mr. Zalinski with the dog, the dog again exhibited the same behavior, standing, hackles up, barking at us. We made Mr. Zalinski aware that what we were there for, and Mr. Zalinski voluntarily walked the dog across the street to place Vegas into the ACO truck. As we observed, Vegas was pulling Mr. Zalinski to the point that he was having a hard time actually keeping his footing. I've been in touch with the trainer, Carlos Flores, who has spent multiple hours training Mr. Zalinski and this dog, and the reports that I have received from the trainer is that the dog can walk at a heel position. The dog was not exhibiting that training that Mr. Flores has been putting all that time into. So the dog was transported to our holding facility, which is in the town of Oxford. He was handed the packet that he would need to petition for his dog back from the hearing authority. I was in contact with Mr. Zalinski. He did ask to visit his dog during this time period, which I did grant, and we had a meeting set up of when he could go visit his dog. Over the weekend, he left a message on my answering machine saying that he's declining visitations of his dog because he did not want to stress the dog out any further than it already was. The dog at the kennel right now is still showing signs of fear. Dog is not soliciting attention from any of the handlers at the kennel. When we go over to his cage, he's in a back, he goes to the back and doesn't come forward, which usually after seven to 10 days, a dog, you know, they'll be a little bit more friendly, realize that we're providing food and all that stuff, and they'll be more apt for handling at that time. The other things that I have observed since the here, the order has been passed, Mr. Zalinski's leash system has not met our requirements. This is a three-foot leash. He's been walking with a regular six-foot leash attached to his hand, and he was supposed to have a three-foot leash, and also a four-foot leash attached to his person. He has had two leash systems every single time I have observed him throughout the town. However, they're just not matching the length. And then another point I would like to bring up, back in January, when we passed this order, hours after his dog was returned to him, Mr. Zalinski was walking on Worcester Street with Vegas, with a muzzle, but with one leash. When asked where the secondary leash was, he didn't really have an answer for that, and I requested for his, for him to go home until he can get that second leash. I did take a picture of it, I did provide that picture in the packet, just for documentation purposes for the future. That sums up basically what I have observed throughout the town during, since January.
Councillors, questions? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to ACO Spencer. Was anyone else in the park during the time in which Mr. Zalinski had Vegas unmuzzled?
Nobody was in the playground area when Vegas was unmuzzled.
Okay. That was my only question, actually, thank you.
ACO Spencer, a couple of questions. That area, you said it was the gated playground area, it's a prohibited area of the park. Is that prohibited by the town for any animals to be in that area?
Mr. Chair, through you, all public recreational areas are prohibited zone for pets due to a board of health issues. We do not want animals to be voiding in areas where children are playing, where zoonotic diseases can be passed on to humans.
No, understandable, I just want to make sure that that's a town regulation, it's not a special regulation that was placed on Mr. Zalinski, specific to these incidences.
It is a town and, believe, a state regulation.
Okay, thank you. As far as the leash system goes, you stated that was a three-foot, but what, what size leash did he have? You said it was not a three-foot, correct? It was what, a six-foot?
They were the standard six-foot size in length.
Was Mr. Zalinski trying to attempt to make it into three-foot, but was it six-foot, or was it just on a six-foot leash?
I am unaware of what Mr. Zalinski was trying to do with the leashes that he had in his possession.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, made me think of a question, follow-up. The secondary leash, the one that's supposed to be attached, was that one also a six-foot or was that a four-foot?
It was the same length as the handheld one.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, quick question. When you guys took the dog over a mechanic from him, how did the dog act at the very beginning? When you walked over to the dog, how did the dog act?
In the same type of behaviors that we have exhibited from this dog in the past, barking, standing in front of Mr. Zalinski in a protective manner, hackles up, moving forward.
How was the dog's reaction once you took Vegas from him? Like, when he walked back across the street and walked into the PD?
When I had possession of Vegas and brought him to the town shelter, I took him for a walk. He was muzzled at that time, so I felt confident in my safety with the dog. I could tell, due to my experience with dog training, there has been training put into him. He would heel on a walk, and I would do a right and left-hand turn, and he would stay by my side. However, I had to establish that I was the leader for this dog and not just let him do what he wanted to do, so I made him sit and wait before I made him come out of the truck. He tried to pull, I corrected it the minute he started to pull, and then he realized by looking at me and giving me eye direction that I was going to be in charge. Now that he's in a kennel without the muzzle, he's not showing that.
Okay, thank you. Just to explain, now to strike that, I'm good. Any other councillors? Here now? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Your recommendation is that the dog not be rewarded back to Mr. Zalinski? That is your recommendation? What happens to the dog if you don't reward him back? Is the dog put down? What happens to the dog?
So, my intent for the dog is to try to find a rescue that will accept all of these town orders that have been placed on it, with the understanding this dog has a bite history, and also with these restrictions that now follow this dog throughout the rest of its life, throughout the Commonwealth. The other thing is, we would try to get it to pass a behavior exam as well, to determine the outcome of the disposition of this dog.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All councillors, also. Chief, do you have anything else to add, or are you good? All right. Okay, I guess we'll hear from Mr. Zalinski first, and, or if you have somebody that's advocating on your behalf.
Sure.
You have to go.
The podium, sir, is it?
Yeah, probably better approach. Thank you, sir. Not to alarm you.
That's just...
Yeah, wait till you get to the mic, Mr. Zalinski. Go to the mic before you start, and we'll, we'll get going.
That's just a piece of paper with my thoughts on it. Okay. That I put down ahead of time, so.
All right. So if you could just state your name and your address for the record, please?
Donald Zalinski, 33 Henry Street, Southbridge. For the record, I want to tell you of my past five months with Vegas and the emergency choking incident. Since January 29th to June 11th, Vegas and I go for daily walks. We go for a lot of them. I would say around at least five to six hours a day. An hour in, an hour out, an hour in, an hour out. It's a great form of exercise for me, and it's, it's emotional support for me, too. And it's helpful for the dog also. He gets plenty of exercise. We do this every day of the week, and it has a calming effect on the both of us. I've had this muzzle on every day along with the two leashes, and I've completed all but two of Carlos's training sessions. Carlos has been very busy and will return to finish the two, especially since COVID has died down. The training has worked, and I'm more confident than ever that I got a great hold on Vegas and security. He has done so good, he really has. We haven't had any incidences on our daily walks, and the roomy house that I live in, there are two small children that live there, and they play with him all day long, and he loves them, and he's calm around them. On June 11th, I was walking Vegas, and he started to choke violently. You know how dogs heave before they're, before they vomit, they start to heave? And I noticed he was panicking, and as he was trying to open his mouth wider. I have a muzzle here that I had on him at the time. It's the similar muzzle, but this one's a little bit smaller. And I put it on him because I was only going out the house for a short walk around the block, because the night before he had been sick. He threw up in my bed. And he, she sleeps next to me for eleven and a half years. And he threw up in the bed, and so I grabbed this leash, I mean this muzzle, instead of the bigger one. I headed to the closest bench, thinking I had time to go and remove his muzzle, but he was heaving more, so I took the muzzle off and tried to settle him down. He threw up and cleared his throat. He laid down for a bit, and he was calm, so I walked back to the bench to put his muzzle back on. And he laid down again. I let him rest, and was about to put the muzzle back on, when Officer Spencer shouted from about 25 yards away, "Why does he have his muzzle off?" I said he was choking, and he just threw up. She told me I should have taken him home. I tried to explain, but she just yelled at me, "Do you have dog bags?" And I says, "Of course I do," and I showed her. I haven't taken him off, I always have him on. A short time later, I went to the police station to make sure that Officer Spencer knew that it was temporary choking emergency that caused me to use that area and remove his muzzle. I also wanted to explain that the night before Vegas had vomited while sleeping in bed. And I had pictures of it here, on my camera, of the sheets. I took pictures as soon as I came back from the house. I didn't walk the dog around the town, I went home right away, took pictures of it, went in the house. And so I got pictures of the sheets hanging. Officer Spencer came over with the paperwork and said she was taking the dog because he wasn't wearing a muzzle and in an open pet area. I tried to explain that she said it was up to the board now. I spoke to another officer, telling him about my grandfather being chief of police in my hometown, and growing up around police officers, and how I had respect for him and for the I told the police officer I thought Officer Spencer didn't like Vegas because he's a pit bull, and didn't like me for reasons that I can't still figure out. She didn't want to hear any explanation, but rather just took the dog from me. Why didn't she just hear me or give me a warning for this emergency, instead of taking my dog away and putting him in a kennel, which is causing great anxiety, enmy anxiety? Vegas and me have been so careful to follow all the town orders of January 28th. I never leave Vegas alone. I don't tie him up to the trees anymore, I don't go in the store. He's always muzzled. I have two leashes, one a four-foot leash that's attached to my belt, and this is the one I have on. I got a measuring tape there. This is a three-foot, four-inch leash, not a six-foot leash. This is the one I have with my handbag, and this one is made to be three feet. And these knots have been there for a long time, and I have video of me two months before with this very leash on. And you could see on the video, when I'm walking Vegas, you can see the leash has these knots right on it. I just got very scared for him, and I went to the bench, and I know it was wrong. If this has happened in the house, I wouldn't even be in this trouble. We'd been doing so good for five months. I called my caseworker and explained Vegas's situation, she's over there, Judy. And she called the ACO to explain what happened, and the ACO just said it's out of her hands. This isn't Vegas's fault, he was choking. This is my fault. It's not the dog's fault for being sick. It's my fault for taking him to that area. But I was just scared. I should be punished, not the dog. The dog's going to be put down. We all know that. We all know that. He's going to be put down, he's too old to adopt out, and with his history, nobody's going to take all those rules on a dog. There are other remedies in your notice of decision, and I will do any of them. You can give me a $500 fine and 60 days in jail, or you can give me a year in jail and a $1,000 fine. I don't care. I'll do anything for this dog. Just don't punish Vegas, punish me. This dog only has me, and I only have him, and he's the only thing important in my life. The only reason I'm living. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zalinski, why don't you stay there for a minute in case councillors have questions of you? No, that's okay, that's okay. It's a lot easier doing this in person than it was on that Zoom call, let me tell you. So, Mr. Zalinski, a couple of things. This is very difficult, I know, for a lot of councillors up here, because, I mean, that was a very long hearing with a lot of information provided and a lot of different viewpoints, and the council did give a, I think, a fair decision to you to what our expectations were. And I certainly understand your, your position, and I understand the ACO's position. I mean, as officials that are sworn to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth and the town, you know, that's their job, and their job is to follow through on orders, so I don't see any way, if she's, she's patrolling the park and she sees you, and the muzzle's off, and you admit that the muzzle's off, for whatever reason it is, it is incumbent on her to make sure that she follows her duty to, to follow up as to what that reason is. And we can debate why you did it and why you didn't, but you're in an area in the park that you're not supposed to have the dog to begin with.
Well, he isn't a pet.
A dog is a pet.
No, he's a service animal.
Well, okay. Let me ask you this. We're five months in, and Carlos hasn't finished his training, although we set up a training plan, is that correct?
Yes, he hasn't finished it yet.
Why is that? I, I don't want to hear the COVID reason, because a lot of people work with COVID, and I know it's been very difficult to get the reports, and we say, "Hey, where's this report? Oh, I forgot." I, you know, has he documented any training by, via video of you and him with the dog?
No, but I have video of me with the dog.
I, no, any training videos at all? You have two more sessions left, supposedly.
Yeah.
Does he come to your house?
Yes, he does. He comes all the way from Boston.
Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just to make a few points, Mr. Zalinski, good evening. Just to go back quickly, on the 28th of January, I was one of the votes that, in one of the councils that stated you shouldn't have received this dog back. I didn't believe in the program then. Here we are tonight, the dog was in a prohibited zone, no muzzle, the dog is still showing fear, according to our ACO, and there was a leash violation as well. Our ACO is appointed for a reason, and she's in that position to make sure that she follows the letter of the law. Guidance was given on that evening, and in my opinion, it hasn't been followed, especially with the dog showing fear. I have to support the ACO this evening? Because this wasn't, the program wasn't followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else that would just provide information? Okay. Who do you have coming up?
I'd like to follow up on the comments. I would like to give my show up.
All right. I'm going to ask that you state your name, your address, and again, we're not here to rehash anything from the previous hearing.
I don't know, I've read the things, I was involved in the case.
Okay, so this, this will be specific to the violations of this order, okay?
Will do.
All right.
Judy Dunne, U39 Church Street, Auburn Mass, employed through family continuity/behavioral Health Metro West, and I am Mr. Zalinski's care coordinator, and I have been through hacking back the last week and a half with this gentleman, and I don't even want to know what's going to happen. I... I, this shouldn't have never happened. I agree he was wrong. He admitted. I also had a conversation with Caitlin on that Monday, and you will see in my letter to all of you, I'm taking it as a very personal thing. It was something she was looking for, saw it. It shouldn't have happened. He got sick. She did say to me, "If he was sick, he should have been home." And my response was, "Animals get sick. They eat things, they get sick. Cats get sick. I have a cat." She was very, very sarcastic through the phone call, very dead-set. I wasn't going to go there with her. And I knew that this was coming up because I already talked to Dawn and I talked to a woman at the town hall, knew this was going to be a seven-day. It's just very detrimental to his mental health, to his care. I've said to my agency, "If this, if he does not get this dog back, I don't know what I'm going to do." I do not know. He made a mistake. It's his dog. I don't know if any of you have pets, you like your kids. But yes, he was wrong. But he had a reason for taking that muzzle off. She does have a job to do. I get it. I have a job to do. And my job right now is to care for his mental health. That is my concern. And I have put tons of time, guys, into this in the last week and a half. And my heart's breaking for this man, I'll be honest. And I know he messed up before. And he promised to do what he was supposed to do. And he did. Nothing since. She did say, tell me that day about the leash. Well, why didn't she write up the leash thing that day?
Ma'am, speak into the mic. Do not address ACO Spencer.
I'm sorry.
I understand you're passionate. Continue, please.
She didn't write up the leash. She did bring it up tonight. She brought it up to me, that he didn't have a leash when she seen him. She did nothing then. Obviously, it wasn't that big of a deal. That's the way I looked at it. The main thing is, this was something I feel when I've talked to many of people in law, and I have a criminal justice bachelor's degree. I'm not some stupid woman, okay? I've talked to many people. To seize a dog for that reason was unheard of, people I spoke with. Citation, fine. He's willing to do jail time. I just think it was a very, very harsh thing. I know what I've been dealing with from him, and I can only go so far. And he is willing to do anything, anything to have him back. And sir, I know you said you weren't far with the last time. He is a scary-looking guy, but he's his boy. It's his pet. He's been around kids, no problem. And I understand why she was scared because I would be scared if a uniformed person comes up to me too. Animals sense the same thing. That's how I look at that behavior. And all I ask you all is just, give him another chance. His mental, his health, he's not eating. He's just, he's going to give up, guys. And you know what? I know you all have a job to do, and I believe in all of you that you'll fail and do the right thing. And I know you represent this town and the community, and you all have jobs, including Caitlin. And I appreciate you all for what you do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just state your name, address, and your affiliation with Mr. Zelinski, please.
So, good evening. My name is Susan Wills. I live at 7 Large Road in Massachusetts, and I'm a friend of Donald in Vegas.
Okay. Can you just pull the mic up to your face a little bit? I apologize.
Sorry.
It's hard to hear.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. As I said, my name is Susan Wills. I've been a friend of Donald in Vegas for about two years now. I met them when I made a delivery of dog food to Donald from a pet supply pantry. I met Vegas that day, on leash, no muzzle, and a perfect gentleman. Vegas knows friends and foe, as do all dogs. I've continued to stay in touch with Donald, helping to support him by buying dog food, toys, and equipment for Vegas as needed. I've been following this situation since day one, and I have some observations I'd like to share. I did attend the first hearing. First, the number-one priority is the continued safety of the Southbridge community. Understood. Donald committed voluntarily to acquire insurance, muzzle his dog, and use two leashes to manage Vegas. I was the one who purchased that four-foot leash that Donald uses to clip to his belt. I've been working with wildlife rescue, wildlife rehabbers, and wildlife rescue rides for two and a half years now. I've met a lot of ACOs from across the state, and I've learned a lot about the critical role of ACOs in a community. And I am concerned by what I'm seeing happen to this man and his dog in this community. As an ACO, an ACO is a professional who must be unbiased and impartial in their work, who must work with the citizens of the community to help teach and educate about the rules and regulations in the community, but also to be compassionate, to have empathy, to support, encourage, collaborate, to respond and communicate with professionalism, and to do whatever they need to do to help the members of their community live in peace and harmony with their pets in combination with keeping the community safe. What I've seen happening to this man and his dog, I fear, is becoming personal. I spoke to a couple of ACOs I work with about what happened on June 11th and in the past. I asked them how they would have responded. Neither one of them would have seized the dog that day. They would have issued a warning or citation, but would have also used that opportunity to talk and listen to the dog owner and encourage his continued progress. Since the last hearing, Donald has worked extremely hard to help, to abide by the rules established and follow through with what was asked. For the past five months, I've watched this man become happier, more confident, and independent. And he was so happy to share how much he was learning from the trainer. I'm so proud of what he's accomplished, as should all of you be. I believe that five months is a pretty good indicator for a full, for a future, long-term success. All Donald wants is to be with his dog and live in peace in the town of Southbridge. And I believe you, the town council and the ACO, instead of waiting for him to fail, need to support and encourage him and help him to be successful. He's already shown that he can be successful. I believe the situation on June 11th was handled inappropriately. Before the ACO arrived, there was no situation. It is interesting that the ACO arrives at the very moment when Vegas had his muzzle off, but it happened. Vegas was choking. Donald removed the muzzle to give him some relief and was going to put it back on. For all of us who are dog owners, we probably would have all done the exact same thing. The ACO, instead of assessing this moment as a teaching or coaching moment, reacted with hostility, and Donald in Vegas reacted in kind. That poor dog. It feels like this ACO has a vendetta out against Donald in Vegas for some reason. It is the ACO's job to respond with professionalism, and clearly, that did not happen here. She should have used that as an opportunity to talk to Donald, tell him to put the muzzle back on, and reinforce not to do it again. But why couldn't she have used the opportunity to also say, "Donald, you and Vegas have been doing a great job for five months, but you need to keep following the rules"? It would have gone a long way to helping rebuild this relationship between Donald and the ACO. Why couldn't she show some compassion and kindness? Why is it always antagonistic? He's worked really hard to keep his part of the deal. The ACO needs to work on her part, too. I'm concerned about her ability at this point to be impartial to Donald in Vegas. She's looking to create a picture of Vegas that doesn't exist today. Vegas has been a very good dog and very tolerant and accepting of the chains which you are making him wear. One final note, the ACO made a comment in the last sentence of her statement about Vegas being rewarded back to Donald. We are not talking about a toy here. You want to punish Donald by euthanizing his dog? This is a very serious matter, and for you to liken it to a toy or punishment-reward is deeply concerning. This is about a man's life and a dog's life, not a toy. It is not about you being right and winning. Mr. Chairman and council members, I urge you to recommend the immediate release of Vegas and that you all continue to support and encourage Donald's hard work. This incident never should have escalated this far, and it should not be grounds for imprisonment or euthanasia for Vegas. Vegas' options are limited, as it would be very difficult to adopt out a 10-year-old pit bull. I implore you all to do the right thing and allow Donald and Vegas to go back to living their lives in peace and to continue to make the Southbridge community's safety their number-one priority. I thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have anyone else?
How are you today? My name is Carrie Givo. I live at 27 Henry Street. I'm the neighbor of that gentleman. I see the dog every day, five times a day. I'm a healthcare worker and also a mandated reporter. I've lived on the side of him for about two years. I've known him probably about one. I never see an issue with that dog. Yes, he might have caused a couple of violations, but that day, I had physically seen that dog get sick. I asked him if he wanted a bowl of water. He said that he was probably going to take the dog home. I says, "Well, I think it's a good idea. You give the dog fresh air." He lives in a rooming house with a whole bunch of people, two children, ages of 12 and seven, which are very high-strung. The dog never has issues with them. He's a very good dog, and when the dog goes into, like a pounce, he's protecting his owner. My dog protects me. We protect our children, okay? But what they don't notice and what they don't see is his tail wagging. I go over and see him all the time. I bring him treats. My dog, I just had to euthanize him and put him down. I gave him all the things from Second Chance that got donated. I gave him some Frontline. I gave him a leash, a second leash to hook to the top of the harness. And at that day that he was at the park, children were in school. There was nobody at Henry Street Park. And yes, it might say, "No dogs allowed." Everybody walks their dog there. It's just not him. He's not, he's not the only one that should be punished for having a dog there. But the reason why he really didn't have that muzzle on him is that dog was vomiting. And he was going to take him back home. It's very warm in that rooming house. Like five, six people live in that apartment, in the same building he lives in, the same room he lives in. That dog has never attacked any child or physically tried to harm any child or me. And I'm a mandated reporter. And that's really all I have to say because that's really what I witness and see every day. And I've never seen anybody so loving and take care of a dog like this gentleman. And I also have witnessed that trainer, because I went outside and had talked to the trainer. The trainer was there, training that dog. Thank you, gentlemen.
My name is Mary Lou Mariganis. I am advocating for Donald Zelinski.
Can you state your address and what?
Yep, yep. Nine Skipaway, Gloucester, Massachusetts. And I'm with an organization, Animal Rescue Connection. The first in your packet at the top is the letter from Carlos explaining the training that has gone on. And so I encourage you to read that regarding his, the response to the officers, being in that protective mode that a dog senses when there is confrontation. And that's what was happening. As far as every day, walking the dog, he goes as far as to say that he's probably better than most average dog owner at this point. We do have a great video showing that, that the dog's very loose on the leash heels. There were kids around and noise in the background. I encourage you to view that if you would like. I would like to do some counterpoints to Officer, to the ACO's report. If you would look at the report, I have some highlights with numbers, and then my counterpoints are correlate to the numbers. So just for brevity, I'm not going to read her letter, obviously, but, one, the dog was lying down and appeared to be resting, and I said, "Yes, that is correct. Vegas was recovering from a choking situation involving incident." Two, in the highlights, "She observed the leash system Mr. Zelinski has been using, which does not meet the three-foot and four-foot lengths as well." Please refer to Carlos's letter where he confirms the leashes used were four-foot leash attached to its person and a three-foot leash knotted, attached to the harness. Again, we have video showing that, so that, you know, showing that that is the case. Sue Wills purchased the four-foot leash off, so that's the fact regarding those leashes. I'm not sure where the ACO has the information that it's not what was ordered. Three, he stated he took the muzzle off because the dog was choking, vomiting, and was sick. Again, yes, that's correct. Donald was scared the dog would choke to death. He's not a trained vet tech, and he took immediate action, I think what most of us would have done in that situation. It's additional to note that he had full control of Vegas in order to apply the muzzle and take it off. Four, Mr. Zelinski started to accuse me of harassing him because I wanted his dog dead. Well, Donald was frustrated because the dog was choking badly. The ACO showed no interest in how the dog was doing. To Donald, her concern was only violations. Prohibited area, no muzzle, dog bags. Now, to Donald, her attitude was not one of encouragement and support, but rather of issuing violations. So, yes, he was frustrated at the time. Five, "He continued to walk his dog throughout the town after our interaction, which I found was odd, since he stated the dog was sick." Well, this is a temporary choking situation, and dogs recover. He normally walks his dog all the time, seven days a week, so it was just a normal routine for him to do that, to continue to do that. Six, "Vegas was not showing any obvious signs of illness and looked eager to continue his walk." Again, yes, as I said, dogs bounce back and they recover fully from getting sick or choking and the like. I'm sure you've had dogs, and one minute they're throwing up, the next minute they're rolling in the grass, so. Seven, "Mr. Zelinski walked the dog across the street, and he had difficulties keeping his footing during, footing due to the dog pulling." Donald walks Vegas seven days a week, multiple times a day. He's not somebody who just comes home from work, walks his dog around the block, goes and has some beer and watches TV. He does it all the time. There have been no such incidents of complaints. He sees police all the time, cruisers pass. There's been no incidents of complaints by police or citizens. And then in the letter from Carlos, it confirms Donald's handling abilities. And once again, I encourage you to look at that short little video that Donald had made. Eight, with one of six-foot leash that first day, yes, Donald was on his way to get the second leash, and he, which he used continuously since then. Ever since then, he has used that second leash. And once again, the leash is three foot long. Nine, "Mr. Zelinski's inability to follow directions. Donald has followed the two-leash requirement, the muzzle requirement, the insurance requirement, the microchip requirement, and the training requirements." It's an inaccurate statement. Ten, "There is no accountability taken, and he's more concerned about deflecting the situation." Donald went to the police station, waiting to see the ACO to explain to her what happened that day and why he had the muzzle off and that it was an emergency. Instead, his dog is taken away. So that, he was showing accountability. He was, and he wasn't deflecting. And finally, what requires a strong able handler, which Mr. Zelinski has demonstrated multiple times, he is not. Once again, he walks his dog seven days a week, multiple times a day. Carlos confirms Donald's handling abilities in his letter that you, that you have, and states he's in more control of his dog than the average dog owner. So I just, in summary, this is what we're faced with, as I say. We have an unfortunate temporary single emergency, dog choking incident. Donald has complied with everything, the insurance, the muzzle, the training, the two leashes, dog bags. He smartly used the bench to make sure he and his dog were secure and to get the muzzle on and off. Well, at that point, to get it back on, because he was going to the bench to take it off, but the dog got sick before he got there. The ACO happened on the scene during patrol, viewed from about 25 yards away, and she was told the dog was sick, choking, and threw up. She responded that he should have taken the dog home and then asked Donald if he had dog bags, which she confirmed. She ordered Donald to muzzle and leave the park. Donald does so. Donald didn't visit the police station to assure the ACO this was a temporary choking emergency. Instead, Instead, Vegas is taken away from him because the muzzle was removed in a no-pet area. Additionally, just regarding that no-pet area, there is confusion on if Vegas is a service dog, emotional support dog. You'll even see in the letters from Dr. Stone that at one point, Dr. Stone uses service dog. So in his mind, too, he thought the dog could be there because it's a service dog. It's another story for another day. He'll agree, he told me he'll agree not to go in a no pets area ever again. But it was a, it is an issue that he firmly believed the dog was allowed there. But that isn't why he was there. He was there because he needed to get to the bench to secure the dog and take the muzzle on and off. Donald's ability to secure and handle Vegas is evident in his everyday walks, with multiple times a day without incident. And I know I keep repeating this, but it's very important. There have been zero complaints in his ability to handle Vegas or in any noncompliance with the order. Our number one priority always remains the safety. That's why all of these things are in place, and he's compliant with all of them. He didn't, we didn't need to be in this situation, in my experience or my opinion. I'm not saying what the ACO did was right or wrong. I'm not here to say that. I'm just saying that there can't, there could have, there is another way. And it could be a little bit more humane and a little bit more reasonable. And if you're inclined to be thinking that at the time, don't think you're too far-fetched, because I wanted to make sure that I didn't have blinders on and I wasn't really biased in this situation. So I, too, as another young lady, you know, asked a few ACs, I know a lot of ACOs, and asked them what they would do in this situation. And everyone's different. Again, I'm not saying right or wrong. I'm just saying that there were other options. None of them would have seized the dog. They would have, you know, issued a citation. Some of them would have issued, all of them would have logged it in. They would have issued a citation. Some would or some wouldn't have. But in that situation where the dog is choking and he takes the muzzle off, in that situation, they just wouldn't have seized the dog. So I know there's laws. I understand that. But reasonable people will not punish for an emergency situation. So we're just begging you to be reasonable in this situation and look at all the facts.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager. So I wasn't going to speak tonight, Mr. Chair, but I was under the impression that we were supposed to keep this to the violations. So if you'll give me a little latitude on kind of refuting some of the testimony that's been given. So the very next day after that original hearing in January, Caitlin had a conversation with Mr. Zalinski. He was in violation the very next day. Three hours after he got the dog back, he only had one leash. Caitlin came to me, asked me what we should do. We could have seized the dog immediately on the spot for that violation. We did not. Second, on February 22, our ACO sent an email, which I have seen because it was CC'd to me, to Carlos, the trainer, saying, "Hey, I'll come out on my own free time, on my own time, for free. I'll help train the dog, whatever you need." Carlos's response was, "Thanks, I'll get back to you." End of June, almost July, no response. Three, the police have never had any instances with Vegas since his hearing. We have. On March 16, one of my police officers is on a detail, and he's, people are screaming at a convenience store saying, "Come over, you have to come over here." He runs over there. Vegas in a muzzle, is growling, pretty crazy behavior, lunging at customers. He was no trespass from that convenience store, not because of the police, not because of Caitlin, but because of his behavior that day. Dog hearings. I heard it mentioned a couple different times tonight how we should have taken a little bit more latitude. I have spoken with animal patrol officers that work in cities ten times the size of Southbridge. And all of them have said that they wouldn't even allow it to get this far. Under MGL 140, Section 157, Dangerous Dog Hearing Statute, how we're enforcing this tonight, there is no citation. There is no verbal warning. I'll read the part of the statute to you to keep it short. "If an owner or keeper of dog is found in violation of an order that you issued, the dog is subject to seizure and impoundment by law enforcement or animal control. If the keeper of the dog is in violation, all reasonable effort shall be made by the seizing authority, ACO Spencer and the town of Southbridge, to notify the dog owner of such seizure, which he was, and upon receipt, he may file a petition for a hearing, which he did tonight." So there is no citation. Final point, disruptive dogs, and you can check the MGL on this, cannot, absolutely cannot be service dogs. It is in the mass general law, in the statute, written in the statute. If they're disruptive dogs in any community, they cannot be classified as service dogs. So I would say that Vegas is not a service dog. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Counselor Trump.
Quickly, Mr. Chairman, sticking to the point of why we're here this evening. Thank you, Chief. If I heard correctly earlier, the dog did show, from the ACO, the dog did show fear when he was taken, I guess, into custody. Is that correct?
Could you go again with that? Sorry.
According to your testimony earlier this evening, I just want to recall, as the dog did show fear when you approached the dog?
The dog was exhibiting a protective manner as in barking, moving forward, hackles up when a uniform presence was in front of them.
Thank you. If I can continue, Mr. Chair. And when the dog was, I guess, finally taken into your custody, was there another officer present?
I was by myself. And as a standard, animal control officers tend to be one officer only. I did call the Oxford Dispatch to let them know that I was down at the shelter with a dangerous dog, and I would call them if I was okay and after I was done there. So if an incident did occur or they didn't hear from me within a half hour, they would have sent a unit down to investigate if they did not hear from me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to ACO Spencer. So the day that the dog was found at the park, he had the three-foot leash on, the three-foot and the four-foot leashes. He was observing the leash while he then, right?
Mr. Zalinski had two leashes attached to the dog, one to his person, one to his hand.
So, but he didn't, and it looks, looking at the photos here, it appears to be the same leash that he presented here tonight. You said you guys approached him a couple hours after the order had been given to him and gave him an educational opportunity. Well, he's clearly still using it. I was going through this report overall, and I felt that the recommendation was a little harsh for the issue at hand. Look, you can't teach an old dog new tricks sometimes, and sometimes it takes a long time. Rome wasn't built in a day. Mr. Zalinski has shown he has made progress. He is doing most of the order. Yeah, he made a mistake. We all are human. We all make mistakes. I don't feel there was no one, no one got hurt. No one's, at the time, he was showing fear, but he wasn't being aggressive, right, during that incident with you? He was showing fear, but not aggression.
Mr. Chair, through you. While Mr. Zalinski and the dog were in the playground area, there was a fenced barrier between the two of us. I would not approach that dog in that state if that fence was not between us, for officer safety purposes.
So, but without the muzzle on?
When Vegas has the muzzle on, because injury to an officer is decreased, they can still cause injury. I would have enough confidence in my skill set to approach them. But if this dog, Vegas, did not have a muzzle, I'd be standing right behind the fence for officer safety purposes from the behavior that I was exhibiting that the dog was giving.
So that does not mean he was showing aggressive behavior, though. At the time, you can say with your experience, based on the history, that would be your response. But he was not showing aggressive behavior at that time. And I just want, I'm saying that to point this out because progress has been made. And I don't, I feel like the, the idea that we're going to, sorry, my phone is going off in my purse. I apologize. So I just do not feel the punishment is appropriate. Do I, I don't know what other options we have. I think that's something we have to discuss. I'm not against, or I'm not saying we shouldn't have some sort of punishment in place or some sort of fine, some sort of citation, something, something on the record that we could do. That's one thing. I don't know, based on, there has been, progress been made. And based on this 11-year history, the amount of progress has been made. I just don't feel that this is a serious enough violation to warrant taking away his animal.
Mr. Chair, through you. If the option to give a citation was available, I would have issued the citation. With the parameters that I was given, that's the job that I executed.
Thank you.
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying in general, this is something I think we as a council need to consider because I think, you're right. Your job is to be rigid with the law as the interpretation of the law stands. Fine. I think it's our job to be reasonable and realize, hey, progress has been made. Nothing violent occurred. I don't understand the recommendation. I guess I unders, I don't understand the recommendation, why we recommend the permanent taking away of an animal over this type of situation.
So I'm going to get to the penalty because I want the Town Manager to weigh in on this based on what I've reviewed so far, based on this hearing, if I could. All right. So a couple things. One, it's been admitted that it was a violation tonight. The muzzle was off. We can argue what the reason was, but the muzzle was off upon the officer's arrival, not exhibiting any signs of illness at that time, based on her training experience. I get the fact that we have evidence that has pictures and all that. I don't have that in front of me, okay? I conduct, they weren't submitted before this hearing, okay? So I'm just going to say that, all right? So Chief Woodson has stated very specifically what the town can do, and he stated it from the mass general law. There was a violation observed. The animal control office had every right to seize the dog based on an order that was issued five months ago. So, and if, and just to this point, because we have another meeting, but to this point, if the animal control officer wanted to harass Mr. Zalinski, she could have done it four months ago, not five months later. So, and we can argue that, but my training, I've been around in law enforcement a long time. If somebody really wants to get somebody, they perhaps could. So I'm not even going to address that. The only remedy that I see on this, and the Town Manager can allude to this, and I'm not sure if you can, in Chapter 140, Section 157A, "Noncompliance of dog owner or keeper with an order." Noncompliance, that's what we had here. Noncompliance of the order. Section 157A, subsection A, "An owner or keeper of a dog who fails to comply with an order of a hearing authority," which was us, "shall be punished for a first offense by a fine of not more than $500 or imprisonment by not more than 60 days in jail or house correction." That was what Mr. Zalinski was referring to. That is what the remedy is, I think. My question is, and I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, if you can answer it. We can't issue fines. That would have to go through the court because it's a mass general law criminal matter. Is that not correct? Or Chief, I'll defer to the two of you because you have experience in these court proceeding-type things.
So when we--
Can you just move the mic to in front of you?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, when we issued the letter dated, January 29, the last paragraph, and I'll read it in its entirety. "Please be advised that this order constitutes an order of the Southbridge Hearing Authority issued in accordance with mass general law, Chapter 140, 157. And it may be enforced in accordance with the procedures set forth in said statute, which may include, after further hearing, and I would interpret today as a further hearing due to a subsequent violation, that the dog be declared endangered or ordered to be euthanized. You are further advised upon proof of a violation of these requirements that the statute provides for immediate surrender of the dog, a requirement that you be prohibited from owning a dog for a period of five years, a fine not more than $500, imprisonment for not more than 60 days, jail or house correction, and all of the above." Now, when I looked at the statute, there's kind of a blending. It says that the hearing authority or, I want to say, the court can order some of these. Clearly, I don't think this body has the power to commit someone to the house of corrections. But I do think that you have the ability to impose some of those penalties that he was put on notice for, specifically the fine and possibly taking of the dog. I guess what I would say, I would temper the punishment with the level of the offense. And I would also say that although not stated there and is not an uncommon practice in the district courts and elsewhere, that a penalty could be issued in part and held in abeyance in part. For example, you could issue a $500 fine and ask Mr. Zalinski to pay 250 of it. The rest held in abeyance, provided there's no further violations. I think it needs to be crystal clear, regardless of what you do, that first and foremost, ACO Spencer, not only is she the dog officer, but she's a member of our police department. And her job, first and foremost, in my opinion, is to protect the citizens of Southbridge. And so when she's out there doing her job, it's not only to look after the dog, but also the citizens, the children on that playground. So it needs to be crystal clear, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman, that if Mr. Zalinski gets the dog back, that he has to understand that there are times when that dog may be his service dog, but there's other times where it's not acting in that capacity and he doesn't get the same rights and privileges as he would when he has that dog. To wit, if he's on a playground where it says no pets, where one would otherwise be there with children, I don't think that is a bona fide use of his service dog to be sitting in a no-pet area. If he had been there with, taking a member of his family to the playground, that might be different. But my read on that situation was he was not there for that purpose. So I do not think that the service dog exception extends to that. So that has to be driven home with whatever you do. But again, I think you're well within your rights if you want to impose a fine or perhaps take the dog. But I leave that up to you. But again, I would just, my years in the court, I would temper the levying of any type of penalty with the severity of the infraction.
Chief Woodson?
If I could just add to that, Mr. Chair, our court officer, there's two ways you could approach this also. Agreed with what the Town Manager had said. We could also process a complaint, a summons, for the violation of the mass general law. And a judge is a neutral party. Not that you're not neutral, but a judge could sit, process it as a complaint, have a police officer complete an incident report relatively quickly. Mr. Zalinski will get a hearing date, and you can put it in the Dudley dish court's hands. That's just another option that you have under any violation of MGL. Our records, I was going to say records. Our court officer could process that complaint.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, once again. And also thank you to the Town Manager. And with respect to my fellow counselors, this dog hasn't attacked anyone yet, yet. We heard that earlier, and we heard a counselor state that very clearly. And we heard that back in January. This dog hasn't affected or bitten anybody yet. Let's take direction from our animal control officer not to award this dog back before something happens. Are we waiting for next time? Counselors, I ask you. Let's take the direction from our animal control officer. Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
With all due respect, Counselor Catrona, he did bite somebody. He bit Mr. Hagerty. This is what triggered this whole situation. And we all drew the line on whether he was going to get the dog back or not. Everybody wants a beat-up ACO. She's not interpreting the law. She's enforcing the law. She's not interpreting the law, she's enforcing the law. She didn't write the law, but she enforces the law. If it's written, Chief just told me he's not a service dog. I'm a peer gathering information. I want to make an intelligent decision. I don't want to be, I think the emotional side of this issue is probably what gets me the most, that I feel bad. I don't want to find Mr. Zalinski, I don't want to put him in jail. The problem is the dog, not Mr. Zalinski. Just for an insight on dogs, I raised five kids, and I had every pet there is known to man, from ferrets, dogs, cats, everything, rabbits. And I had the experience with a pit bull. And I got ripped from here to here, and I have a scar on my face. I'm 6'1", 270, and I kicked that dog's ass, okay? My point being, dog was unconscious, I'm bleeding like a pig, thought I lost my eye, the blood shot in my eye, so I beat him with one eye. My point is, if Mr. Zalinski one time takes that muzzle off because he's throwing up, and it's a child there that can't protect themselves, who wants to take the responsibility? Zalinski? Great. Some kids can get mauled, and I'm going to sit here as a counselor saying, "Here comes chance number two. No more chances. I'm backing the ACO because I know what can happen. I experienced it. I rear the scar on my face." So, if you want to talk about nice doggies and pets, you can talk about them. There are some very nice pit bulls. I've had some. I've had some very nice dogs. They're very, they're not protective when they go bite somebody. I've just, the dog that got me came from a bad breed line. I don't know what the dog's breed line is. But I was the third person that the dog attacked. So, if you want to give them another chance, good. Then it's on you when that little girl gets ripped up in a recreation area. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you.
Sir, can I show you a video of the-
We don't have the capacity, it would have to be a public record, so I don't have the capacity to do it right now.
Can I just answer to the Chief's accusation?
Go ahead, Mr. Zalinski.
Donald Zalinski, 33 Henry Street. About the incident at the Cumberland Farms, it's 5:00 in the morning. I had a muzzle on, two leashes. I went in, soon as the manager was right near the door, she said, "That dog can't come in here." I said, "He's a service dog." She said, "I've never seen a service dog with a muzzle on." And that was her reason for throwing me out. He wasn't barking at anybody or threatening anybody. That was it. And I left, and I called their corporate office, but the reason they covered their backs is they give me a no trespass. So, they don't want my service, I won't give it to them.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel.
Mr. Zalinski, real quick, before you sit down, if you don't, please. What were the requirements that I made this very clear?
Go to the microphone.
You made it very difficult this evening for me as a dog lover.
Yeah.
I've got a dangerous dog, and that dog is secured. And, but one of these things that I put in there was that that dog was supposed to be tethered to you at all times when you took it out, right? Where was the dog tethered to at Dunkin' Donuts?
Oh, Cumberland Farms, you mean?
Oh, Cumberland Farms.
He was tethered to me. I haven't taken this off. I leave it on so I don't have to keep taking it and all that off. He's got to pull me.
Okay.
Because it's attached to the belt.
So, you didn't go inside at all? You just stayed outside?
No, I went in, and as soon as I went in the door, the girl, the assistant manager said, "Dog can't come in here." I said, "He's a service dog." She said, "Well, I've never seen a service dog with a muzzle on." You know?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
So, the question is, Mr. Town Manager provides the guidance on this, do we first entertain a motion of whether there was a violation of the order first?
I think it would be appropriate after hearing that to make a determination based on the testimony you heard from Mr. Zalinski as well as ACO Spencer, whether in fact you think there was a bona fide violation of the order that was issued back in January.
All right, so it's a-
Go ahead, could you state that in a motion form, Mr. Town Manager, if you could?
That would-
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that the council, acting as the hearing authority for the town of Southbridge, entertain a motion relative to a finding of fact that there was in fact a violation of the order that was originally issued pursuant to the hearings in January, that on the date and time, on Friday, June 11th, that ACO Spencer did observe a violation of that order.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Discussion on that? Y'all set with that? We're going to go a roll call?
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
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 Counsel Alzo.
Yes.
Counsel Marketti.
Yes.
And Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Counsel Steves.
Counsel Steves and Counsel Dow, excuse this evening.
Okay.
And then, secondly, Mr. Town Manager, there would be what we would do as a hearing body?
So, again, given the letter that I worked on with counsel that was issued to Mrs. Zalinski back on January 29th, that last paragraph spells out what could happen if in fact violation happened after a further hearing. So, I think at this point, you have a variety of options that I think someone could make a motion based on one of those, whether it be for a fine, whether it be to seize the dog, and then from there, you could have discussion, and it could be amended, the fine could be placed up, down, held in abeyance. But I think someone has to start the discussion with some type of motion.
Mr. Jim, I make a motion that we call the recommendation of ACO, our ACO.
Second.
And that motion was simply that the dog be removed, right? From the care. Correct?
According to further advice upon proof of violation of these requirements, the statute provides for a multitude of remedies, including an immediate surrender of the dog that's listed in the letter that was worked on. It was also our legal counsel helped with the drafting of this letter as well.
Okay, so the motion is to follow the recommendation, which was that the dog be removed. Correct? ACO Spencer?
Recommend, the recommendation is the dog not be rewarded back to Mr. Zalinski.
That is the only recommendation?
Mr. Chair, through you, my recommendation is to not award Mr. Zalinski his dog back for the possibility of future violations, which I do have a strong feeling which will occur again.
But the, this is a, so it's motion not to award back to Mr. Zalinski, Vegas, based on the violation of this notice. That's the only recommendation, is not to take back, it's not to be euthanized or anything like that, it's just not to award him back. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, discussion? Counsel Ryan?
I oppose this, not surprisingly. I don't think the punishment fits the crime. Yes, there was a violation of the order, everyone in this council agrees, Mr. Zalinski agrees, the police agree. Progress has been made, and I'm not seeing enough definitive proof to convince, to say this man does not get his dog back. I think it's perfectly reasonable to think, I'm taking this off for a quick second. Yes, he was wrong, and he admits he was wrong, but it's totally reasonable to think someone is going to take off the muzzle for a second to clean off the dog, to let the dog have some space for a minute. It was wrong, point of reeducation needed. No one got hurt, the dog has not been violent since. The crime that was committed, there should be a punishment. This is not it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Alzo?
Mr. Jim, made it short and sweet. It's a problem for the town of Southbridge. It's a chance that I don't want to take. I'd be willing to buy Mr. Zalinski a new dog if he wants one, but I can say this, I am not in the position as an elected official to take a chance for somebody in Southbridge on another oops, I didn't mean it, to get damaged in some way, especially, I fear something happening with a child after the last incident. If that was a child, what would we have said? So, I think that my vote is to follow the recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call?
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Counsel Alzo.
Yes.
Counsel Marketti.
Yes.
And Counsel Ryan.
No.
Motion carries.
Town will notify you and write in that town will maintain control of the dog.
You're just going to keep the dog.
Town will have the dog right now.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, that's it. Motion to adjourn.
To move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I just-
Every one of us.
The, Mr. Zalinski may, I'm looking for it right now, in most instances, if he's not satisfied with this determination, he generally has the ability to appeal this to a court, whether it's the district court or the superior court, I'm not sure, but I just want to let him know that in all likelihood he has that opportunity, and if need be necessary, I can explore that further, and he can contact my office so that I can give him the appropriate direction. But typically, if someone's not satisfied with the hearing here, there is an appeal process.
Dog never been a kid, never.
So, all right, Mr. Zalinski, that's it. I just want to let, no, I'm done. Y'all set too?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, in the notice that Mr. Zalinski has sent, it should be a subsection in the bottom of it that explains the appeal process.
Okay.
So, that's correct. If he's not satisfied, it's either superior or district.
Yep.
But he'll have the option for a judge to make that decision.
Right.
So, he's clear, so he's aware.
And that's because this council, after much debate over five and a half hours, did not declare the dog a dangerous dog, much to dismay of some of my colleagues, and was declared a nuisance dog. And we gave lots of leeway to parameters of regulations that he had to follow.
Yeah, the dog got sick.
That's all right. Sir?
Why don't you recess?
All those in favor of German?
To move.
No, we already had a motion, a second.
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion carries. Standard recess for five minutes until we reset for the next meeting.